Okay, good evening, everyone and anyone who's online. Welcome to our March 29th meeting and historically, our first meeting in person since, you said, two years ago and a day or a few days, yeah. That's amazing. So can we all just clap about that? Okay, great. It feels great to be in person. All right, so let's get started with this calling of the roll.
Alderman Lince.
Here.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Here.
Alderwoman McAndrew, here. Alderwoman Buse, here. Alderwoman Patel, here. Alderman Fader, here. Mayor Harris, here. City Manager Gibson, here. City Attorney O'Keefe, here.
Great. And now we'd like to consider approving the minutes from March 10th, 15th, and 18th.
I will move to approve the minutes from March 10th, 15th, and 18th.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Hey, that passes with flying colors. All right, next, we have the time for public requests and petitions. So if there are any comments from our, our public viewing audience or anybody here in the chambers, something that's not on our agenda tonight, we would welcome that comment now. Andrea, you'll tell me if there's anyone raising their hand out there. Okay. Okay, I don't see anything coming from that direction. So I did, we did get an email from a resident who requested that it be read aloud, so I will do that now. Dear Mayor Harris and members of the Board of Aldermen, the city has two commissions for which the terms of service for members are outlined but not limited. The Plan Commission, ARB, and the Parks and Recreation Commission. All other boards and commissions, including the Board of Aldermen and the Office of Mayor, have both outlined terms and limits to those terms. I'm proposing that limits to the terms of members on the Plan Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission be instituted when the city charter is amended. Prior to that, I propose that the BOA or the Board of Aldermen adopt the practice, the practice of limiting the terms of the members of the Plan Commission, ARB, and the Parks and Recreation Commission to match those used by other city boards and commissions. Thank you, Kathleen Gunn. By the way, there is no, just in case anybody wonders, there is no imminent charter change being considered. It's kind of made it sound like there was. All right, moving on, I think we have a special presentation. With the city clerks from Wentzville and DePere, come on forward. Yeah. Hi, ladies.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor Harris and Board of Aldermen. My name is Nancy Sullen. I'm the Assistant City Clerk for the City of Wentzville. I also serve on the Eastern Division's Public Relations Committee and the State MOCFWA Public Relations Committee. Here with me tonight is Amanda Harris from DePere. And our purpose here tonight is to recognize your City Clerk, June Frazier, for having been awarded the designation of Continuing Missouri Registered City Clerk. This certification is a combination of education and experience, and June is to be commended for her perseverance in achieving this goal and encouraged to continue pursuing her education. The Missouri City Clerks and Finance Officers Association has a current membership of over 600 clerks and is dedicated to the education of city clerks and finance officers throughout the state of Missouri. With the ever-changing state statutes and rules governing cities, it is vital that someone be kept current on those changes and regulations. MOCFWA takes this role very seriously and will continue to strive to ensure that the education provided is relevant to the needs and the position of city clerk. Additionally, you as elected officials are to be commended for your continued support of June as she has worked towards this certification. It is clearly demonstrates that you recognize the knowledge she receives at the educational sessions is of great benefit to you, to your other city staff, and to your citizens. And now, June, on behalf of the Eastern and the MOCFWA Public Relations Committee, we now present you the certificate of appreciation.
Much better. Not your fault, it was mine. There we go. Great. Thank you.
Congratulations, June. You are awesome. All right, I think we've gotten to the time in the agenda where we have the city manager report. Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item is an amendment to the parking agreement for 227 South Central Avenue. The city and HBK Clayton Owner LLC entered into a sublease agreement for parking spaces on March 14th, or May 14th, 2019. The parking agreement was then amended on January 11th, 2022. The original agreement and the January 11th, 2022 amendment omitted direct payment for leased spaces to St. Louis County as required by the city's agreement for the Shaw Park Parking Garage. The attached amendment corrects this omission and requires the developer to submit payment for leased spaces to the county. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance.
All right, thank you. I'll open discussion. Any comments from our audience or listeners? All right, I'll open discussion for the board. Any, any questions, comments from anybody up here? All right, Alderman Lince.
I'll introduce Bill 6892 to approve an amendment to the parking agreement for 227 South Central Avenue to be read for the first time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6892, first reading, an ordinance approving and authorizing execution of Second Amendment to Sublease Agreement for Parking Spaces Related to 227 South Central Avenue.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, Alderman Lince.
I'll move that the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill 6892 on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
And I'll introduce Bill 6892 to approve an amendment to the parking agreement for 227 South Central Avenue to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6892, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance approving and authorizing execution of the Second Amendment to Sublease Agreement for Parking Spaces Related to 227 South Central Avenue.
Alderman Lince.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, amendment to Section 215, Failure to Supervise Minors.
Yes, Mayor, the role of the All In Clayton Coalition is to achieve community-level change by reducing and preventing youth substance abuse. The Coalition collaborates with the Clayton Police Department to educate the community on the dangers of social hosting. Social hosting occurs when underage drinking takes place at a property under control of an adult. The Clayton City Ordinance, Section 215.605, Failure to Supervise Minors prohibits social hosting. The All In Clayton Coalition and the staff of the Clayton Police Department reviewed this ordinance and compared it to similar ordinances in other communities. The review revealed the current ordinance's lack of prohibition, preventing an adult from leaving a property under their control when it is reasonably foreseeable that minors will consume alcohol on the property. Therefore, amending the ordinance by adding, adding the following provision is recommended. If this would be Item C, Duty to Supervise, it shall be unlawful for any person in control of a premises or his or her adult designee to leave a premises when it is reasonably foreseeable that said premises may be used for a gathering at which alcoholic beverages or controlled substances be in the possession of or consumed by minors. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance, amending Section 215.605 of the Clayton City Code. We do have Captain Al Thuitt and Corporal Jenny Schwartz here this evening that can answer any questions you have about the program.
Okay, great. I wonder if one of you guys would just come up and just review kind of some little high points of the discussion you had with the All In Coalition? And what made you think this is going to be the right move?
Yeah, so actually, our ordinance was very old previously, and then we redid it about, I think in 2017. It became much more up-to-date with current policies of our, our neighboring agencies. So we were taking a look at the ordinance again, just to see if there was anything we could do to improve it. And when we looked at a couple neighboring agencies, we saw the Duty to Supervise section in there, which just made it a little more clear for the officers to understand what that ordinance meant and for residents to also understand what it meant. Because before, we, we would still, could still use it, but it's just a little more vague and a little harder to prove. And this just gives us a little more teeth to update this law. I know a lot of people probably wonder how much we do this, and it's not a lot. We look back today, we went back 10 years, and we've only written the summons 10 times in 10 years. And those are for more, the more clear-cut violations. There are a couple of times where we have forwarded to the city prosecutor to see if he would want to issue charges on it, but we don't have a number on that. But we just feel that this change in language just makes it a little easier for everyone to understand.
Any questions, guys? Rich?
So if a parent or leaves for a week to Florida
Yes.
and leaves their 18-year-old in the house.
Yes.
And he has a party, is that considered?
Not necessarily. So what we have to do is the, it says it has to be foreseeable that this could occur. When this is, what we would do, you have to build a case, make a strong case on it. The way you would do that is talking to people there at the scene. If you talk to the people that are there or the parents that left town, if they tell us, and we had one of these several years ago, where the parent left town, gave the kids permission to have this party. It got out of control. We got called. The parents were not very receptive to our request to help us break it up. We left. We got called back a second time. The parents called us this time when their son had been beaten up really bad at the party. And so those are the things we're trying to prevent with this. So we would have to prove that it's foreseeable that you could have known. So like that case where they knew they were going to have a party, that would be something if the parents, or if the parents would get there and say, hey, I told them I'd rather them be in one location drinking, even though I'm not home, that would be something that they could foresee that that would occur. Or the other instance I could see is if we've been there twice before for parties when the parents have gone out of town, and they leave again and don't put any other restrictions in place to prevent that from happening. That's when it would be foreseeable.
Okay, great. Any other? Alderman Fader.
I cannot hear Alderman Fader if he's talking.
Didn't hit the button. So I, again, I, I, I think this is a good change, but I'm just wondering, to the extent that the ordinance only provides for a $500 fine, perhaps some incidental cost, but in a rather affluent community, I would be concerned that some parents might feel that that's just sort of the cost of having a party. So I don't know if you have any, any reaction to that?
That's a great question. I think the city attorney, I don't know on fines exactly where we would stand on that.
I, I understand the problem, but of course, the state limits the city as to the maximum amount of fine that it can levy in any instance. The other thing is that, as you can appreciate, Mr. Fader, violating this standard of conduct may support a cause of action for damages for a social host akin to the dram shop liability that a licensed vendor may enjoy. And by establishing this standard of care, standard of conduct, that would facilitate a private cause of action for damages sustained as a result of a social host failing to exercise supervision over the consumption of alcohol by minors.
Thank you. One, one follow-up. I know that, I know that the department does a great job with sort of dealing with the community on community relations. A thought as to how we get the word out to the community that this has changed and that has to be taken seriously.
That's a great question, and we've actually been working with the All In Coalition to be able to set up a plan to let the community know that this new, or that the ordinance has been amended. Our hope is to be able to do this in conjunction with the prom season. The All In Coalition students have a annual sticker shock program where they put stickers out on random locations based on whatever message they're trying to send. This year, the focus is on social hosting. So the idea is to include a QR code that links directly to the amended ordinance so that you can see the, the ordinance in full. That in conjunction with our social media posts that we will be putting out jointly every Friday starting in April.
Great. Thank you.
I, I would assume the school district will be publicizing this in their newsletter to parents and stuff like that?
This is a joint plan, so it'll go out through the school district on behalf of the All In Coalition as well as on behalf of the police department.
Good. And thank you, Alderman McAndrew, for participating in that whole thing. You're our liaison to the All In.
Yeah, and it, just in that vein, I was just, I wanted to say that Lieutenant Thuitt and Corporal Schwartz just do a great job of providing their insight, and they really do such a great job with All In Coalition. So they should be commended for all their hard work with it, so.
Great, thanks.
Michelle, can I say, I just want to express appreciation to, and to the work the Coalition does. It's important, and this, probably the most important thing, is getting the messaging out. So it sets a standard of conduct in the community. I think it, it would be hard to prosecute, you know, how do you prove all that? But at least the message is getting out there more and more consistently. So, thank you.
Any other comments, questions from our board members? Okay, I have to get used to turning my head. I'm just used to looking at a screen, and I can tell. Okay. Yeah, thank you. All right, Alderman Lince.
I'll introduce Bill 6893 to approve an amendment to Section 215.605, Failure to Supervise a Minor, to be read for the first time by title only.
Do we have a second? All right, any, any discussion?
I seconded it.
What, what'd you say? Did you say something, Ira?
I thought I, I thought I seconded, yeah, seconded, and then you asked for a second, so I'm just.
Well, it was kind of crossing. Yeah, I was, yes. Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any discussion? All right. Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6893, first reading, an ordinance amending Section 215.605 of the Clayton City Code relating to the offense of failure to supervise minors with regard to the consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages or controlled substances.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
I'll move, I'll move the board give unanimous consent to consideration for adoption of Bill 6893 on the day of its introduction.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let the minutes reflect. The board has given unanimous consent.
And I'll introduce Bill 6893 to approve an amendment to Section 215.605, Failure to Supervise a Minor, to be read for the second time by title only.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill number 6893, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance amending Section 215.605 of the Clayton City Code relating to the offense of failure to supervise minors with regard to the consumption or possession of alcoholic beverages or controlled substances.
Alderman Lince.
Aye.
Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Buse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, Mr. City Manager, ARPA funding.
Okay, thank you. The United States Congress adopted the American Rescue Plan Act, or ARPA, in March 2021, which in part established the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, SLFRF, to provide financial support to state and local governments in responding to the economic and public health impacts of COVID-19. Under the provisions of SLFRF, the City of Clayton has been allocated nearly $3.4 million in funding to be received in installments. The first installment of $1.69 million was received in August of 2021. A supplemental payment of $16,281 was received this month, and the final installment of $1.69 million is expected to be received in August of 2022. The U.S. Department of Treasury issued its final rule, which goes into effect on April 1st, 2022, which offers election of a standard minimum allowance of up to $10 million for revenue loss, not to exceed a recipient's SLFRF award amount. Under this provision, the city is allowed to use funding for continued provision of government services. Staff recommends that the funds be used for general government services, including administrative services and solid waste services, including collection and disposal of solid waste, recycling, and yard waste disposal for fiscal years 2021 and 2022 to utilize the full amount of ARPA funding provided to the city. Staff recommends adoption of the attached resolution approving a plan for allocating the SLFRF funding. And just so you know, this money was all contained within the approved budget for those particular items. This is just approving a separate resolution that we would then use to report the use of those funds to the federal government. So any questions about ARPA or the, the money we're receiving?
No questions? Okay. Alderman Lince.
I'll move to approve Resolution 2022-10, to approve a plan for allocation of funding received under the American Rescue Plan Act.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, moving on, Juneteenth.
Thank you, Mayor. On June 19th, 1865, more than two years after the Emancipation Proclamation was signed by President Lincoln, enslaved Americans in Galveston, Texas finally received word that they were free from bondage. This momentous occasion has been celebrated as Juneteenth, a combination of June and 19th for over 150 years. Juneteenth was recognized as a federal holiday last year. As such, staff is requesting the Board of Aldermen to consider whether it should be adopted as an official city holiday. The city currently observes 10 official holidays throughout the year. The Missouri Municipal League recently conducted a formal survey regarding which cities recognize Juneteenth as an official holiday. Among the 33 respondents, 64% of respondents recognize it as an official holiday. We did do some further research based on some questions that we'd received from Alderwoman Patel, and just trying to get a better idea of the cost here. We do estimate that every time we have a paid holiday, the, the, the cost of the city is about $20,000, and that's because we have departments that operate even though our offices may be closed. So that would be police and fire. And then the case for something like June 19th, the Center of Clayton is only closed on two days every year. We would have to talk to CRSWC about whether or not they'd be open on, on Juneteenth, but if they were, the total amount would be about $20,000 to add it as a holiday. The comp study that, that was performed back in 2019, that indicated that our comparable, competitor cities or comparator cities, I shouldn't say competitors, but I guess in a comp study, that's what we're looking at. Cities typically have between 10 and 12 official paid holidays every year. So we're currently at 10. If we were to add one, we're still within that range of what we're seeing in other cities. I would say that the cities that have added Juneteenth, it's a, it's almost split between cities that converted an existing holiday or added this as a new holiday without touching what they had. So some cities took floating holidays and converted one of those to, to Juneteenth. Others took days like Columbus Day they might have had, that they had for a long time on the books, and we're looking to switch that to something and utilize this opportunity with Juneteenth. So there's just a whole mixture out there, and really, we just need to figure out what's, what's right for Clayton. Because I think we're certainly within the ballpark on the number of holidays we provide. So I'll open it up for discussion.
Well, so does this mean that city facilities will be closed on June 19th?
So City Hall would be closed, so our general government services would be closed. Police, of course, would still be here. Fire would still be here. The Center of Clayton, we would need to have that discussion with CRSWC. But based on the other federal holidays that they have where that building is open, I, I would, I would assume they would probably want to keep the building open on Juneteenth.
So I mean, we have like the outdoor pool and different things. Would they be closed?
The outdoor pool, we would, we would keep open.
Okay.
Along with the Center of Clayton.
I'm really chasing around to, is there any savings from not having certain things open in a day? So the 20,000, is that net of any savings we realize from not being open?
That's really salary expense for those employees that work those days. So on a holiday, employees get the, the regular pay that they would receive. That's their holiday pay, and if they're working, then they receive their regular rate on top of that. So it's really, you know, two times pay for employees that did work that day.
Okay, got it.
That's how we got to the 20,000.
Okay, good. That was a good question, Becky. Any other questions or comments, discussion? Alderman Fader?
David, you may have addressed this already, but in the list of holidays, the, the one holiday at the bottom that is designated as floating holiday to be determined by the city manager, does that mean that conceivably this would be the floating holiday? Or would, is, is the part of the question that we would have this new holiday and we would still preserve the floating holiday?
Realistically, there are two options. One would be to replace the floating holiday with Juneteenth. The second one would be to add it as, as an additional holiday or an 11th paid holiday at the city. The floating holiday has been determined, like it says here, annually by the city manager. I recently changed that into really a true floating holiday. We did an employee survey to see whether employees wanted Super Bowl Monday off. We asked all kinds of questions to try to get it. It's much easier for us to schedule everything if we know when that day is going to occur. In the past, it's been on Christmas Eve, it's been on New Year's Eve, all types of different days. So with the variety of answers we had, there was no answer to what employees would prefer. So I, at that point, said, it's just going to be a floating holiday. Take it whenever you want. People wanted to take it for religious purposes, for all types of different things. So I'm just leaving that as an employee option. If we want to replace anything on that list with Juneteenth, that would be the one. But I, I ultimately think our recommendation would be to add an additional holiday, just because I think a lot of our employees build that floating holiday into their own, their own scheduling for, for their own purposes.
Okay, good. Susan?
One question. Is there any federal holiday that we don't recognize locally?
There are, there, there are certainly federal holidays that we don't recognize, yes, where other cities are close. Columbus and Veterans are the two most prominent that you'll see other places. And here in Missouri, you even see Truman Day recognized some places.
Okay, any other comments or questions? All good questions. Do you have something, Becky?
I, I was just going to say, I'm not sure if we've decided if we're voting on something, but I would support adding the holiday as an additional holiday. So just to offer that as what I'm, what I'm willing to support.
And it would just be a, a simple motion, a majority vote, in order to approve that, and then we would add it to the personnel policy.
Okay, we're all set up for that. Alderman Lince.
I was going to say, I would, I would agree with that. I mean, it's a competitive hiring landscape. We can't afford to.
Good point.
So then I will make a motion to adopt Juneteenth as an additional holiday for the City of Clayton.
I will second that motion.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and there we go. The last thing on our agenda is an appointment to the Plan Commission.
Yes, per the city's charter, the Board of Aldermen shall appoint members to the Plan Commission to fill both new and unexpired terms. Due to a recent vacancy on the city's Plan Commission and ARB, the Board of Aldermen encouraged Clayton residents to complete and submit an application of interest to serve. By historical practice, the Board of Aldermen has strived to appoint members with architectural background and/or related profession. The city received several applications from well-qualified individuals. After careful consideration and review of all applicants, the board has recommended the following individual to be appointed. Mayor Harris has reviewed and agrees with the recommendation for appointment, and therefore submits the following nomination to the boards, for the board's consideration. Kami Waldman of Ward 3 for Appointment to Serve an Unexpired Term Through June 30th, 2022. Staff recommends that the Board of Aldermen consider the appointment to the Plan Commission, ARB.
Okay, thank you. I just want to just interject real quick that I think the applications that came in, you know, this was by a lot, you know, by quite a distance. This one was way more qualified and had way more experience in the architectural planning field. So I just wanted to make that point upfront. Go ahead, Bridget. I think you, you, this is a Ward 3 person, so would you like to say anything about it?
Yeah, I would just say, I, I know Kami very well, and I think she's, she's really excited.
She's thrilled to kind of be lending her expertise, and I really, I can't say enough. I saw her on the Merrimack Playground today, and she's very, very excited, so I think she'll do a wonderful job.
Great. And you know, it's great to have, you know, to kind of diversify our age group and sort of lifestyle among our different boards and commissions, and of course, she's young and has younger kids, and I think that's a, it's just a nice thing to be able to add someone like that to the Plan Commission, yeah. Any other comments? Ward 3 Alderman, Gary Fader?
I just want to say, I do support the candidate. I think she's, her background and her personal characteristics would make her a strong addition. I just would make the observation that, as I understand it, the Plan Commission and ARB are really two separate entities which meet at the same time, because their issues often overlap. But I think sometimes the emphasis on the architectural expertise, which is very important to the ARB, I think we don't want to lose sight of the fact that, especially on the Plan Commission, which essentially is a planning and zoning body, that the key is really knowledge of generally of real estate, of land use and zoning. I think we're very fortunate that some of the people we have on the commission, like Steve Lichtenfeld, is not only an extremely insightful architect, but he's been around long enough that he has a really good sense of land use issues and how commercial and residential coexist. But I think if we look at the composition of this entity, once we're done with this vote, you know, four of the five people who are appointed, leaving aside the liaison and the city manager, will all be people with an architectural background. If this was just the ARB, I would think that would make sense. But to the extent it's also the Planning Commission, which deals with zoning and planning, I think just in the future, we need to be aware that we definitely benefit from people like George Haddock, who just dropped off, who's not an architect, but knew a lot about low-income housing. Bob Denlow is a real estate attorney who knows a lot about real estate values. So I just think we want to be careful not to overload this combined body too much with architects as we go forward. I'm fine. I totally support the nomination. I think we just should be wary of that as other vacancies arise. Thank you.
It would be great if some urban planners would apply.
Would be good.
See if we have any out there.
Am I mistaken, but she's not an architect. She's a designer. She, is that true?
I think that's correct. I think we have one landscape architect who works at the School of Architecture, and I think our newest addition, you're correct, I think works for an architectural firm, but is not an architect, but I still would think is sort of a focus on the design aspect as opposed to some others. So I'm all in favor of it. I just think we just need to be careful going forward.
Okay, good point. Any other comments or questions? All right.
I'll move to appoint Kami Waldman to the Plan Commission, ARB, to complete a vacant term.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, very good. That's the end of our business agenda. I think normally we would, I know we're going to have a closed session here, but let's go ahead and go around and see if anybody has anything to share from the last couple of weeks. And if you don't, that's fine.
I don't have anything to share, other than to say that I believe the Dymond mural is now on the CCF website and open for donations.
Right, progress.
I don't have anything to report. Oh, sorry, Ira.
Oh, yeah, Ira, sorry. Do you have anything to report?
Well, we did have an ARB meeting last week, and there was really an excellent presentation that was given to the ARB regarding special development districts. The presenter was incredibly qualified, great expertise, and really, really educated, I think, the entire board. The presenter was me.
We know that.
So, but I just wanted, so, but one of the things that came up in that, in the fact that, you know, it really gave me an opportunity to read very much carefully, much closer the, you know, the ordinance. So I think something for us to consider is, and I brought it up at the ARB as well. You know, we don't have a point system for the SDD. We have a point system for PUDs, but, you know, the SDD, you'd think we would have one even more so, because that involves even a larger project, usually in phases, of course, but it is a larger development. And so if we have a point system for the PUDs, it would seem logical to have one for the SDD. So I think that's something for us to look at in the future. I don't want to speak for David, but he and I talked about it, and I think his position is we'd like to kind of see how the point system goes with our PUDs. And then I think we can, you know, have a better idea of how to implement it and how to enact it with our, you know, the SDD. So anyway, just something food for thought, that's all.
That's good, great, thank you. We can probably, maybe if everyone would like, we can add it to a future, maybe a Friday session or discussion session?
Yeah, I think what we'll do is, we know that we have some projects that are going through, they've had community conferences recently and also some concept reviews. See how those go through the process, see if we need to make any other tweaks to the PUD system. We've only utilized it twice at this point, once with Forsyth Point and once with Bemis in place. We are talking about a PUD amendment that will go before the Plan Commission coming up on ground floor retail, for example. So what, I think what the Plan Commission had discussed ultimately with this is, let's monitor these next few projects that come. And once we have a better sample set and we see how it works, let's iron everything out and then talk about applying it possibly to SDD. So it's still a very experimental system and way to go about zoning approvals, so.
Sound good, everyone?
Yes.
I see nodding. Okay, good. Okay, let's see, we covered you, Bridget. All right, Alderman Buse. Nothing. Alderman Patel?
Yeah, I just have a few updates in sustainability. The Communications Subcommittee has worked with the city staff, and I want to thank Gabby and our communications team, who shared a plan for communicating all different kinds of information related to sustainability via the city communication channels. So keep your eyes open for that. And then the main other thing I wanted to say is I'm excited about the softball, youth softball season starting. So to our Parks and Rec Department, that'll be working hard on that and keeping the fields ready and stuff. And then I was going to mention the mural, so we're really excited about that in Ward 1 and for the whole community of Clayton to have its first mural. And so you can go to the Clayton Community Foundation website or Facebook page and find information about the project and support it if you're interested in that.
Very good. Lots of firsts. It's good. Alderman Fader, anything?
I attended the community conference on the World News site, and it was, I think, they did a nice presentation and didn't arouse a lot of excitement, so it was a positive event. Alderwoman McAndrew and I had another good Ward 3 coffee, and I think some of the zoning issues, really, you can tell from the coffee and from attendance, you know, how well some of the other meetings have gone in terms of sort of lessening some of the tension about some of the projects. So I think that's been a positive. The Housing Subcommittee of the CEC is continuing to pursue the issue of potential workforce housing being worked into the PUD ordinance, and we're having a meeting, sort of a Subcommittee meeting with some developers this week just to sort of get their reaction as to how practical and pragmatic it might be to pursue that. Alderwoman McAndrew and I are going to the Barclay House next week. We suspect they are going to want to know what's happening at the Future Commons, since it's right across the street from them. And finally, I would just mention that strictly as a volunteer, I am working with CCF to help with the legal document that would implement the mural. So hopefully, we can make that a cooperative effort to get that project done as soon as possible.
Great, thank you for that. That's great. I have gotten a number of emails over the past year, I'd say, from the people in the Barclay House who want to know about the Commons or the ice rink. All, at least at this point, all positive on, we want to see skaters again. So we'll see what they, I'll be interested to see what they all have to say. All right, I guess I'm next, and I don't have a lot. I did, and I always do, but I seem to have had a bunch of regional meetings going on the last couple of weeks. And so I will just suggest, and if you want to, the last Metro Municipal League meeting I went to had Susan Troutman as their guest speaker. It was a very interesting presentation, and, you know, she reminded me of all the connectivity that we could possibly achieve someday in the region with our bike and pedestrian lanes. And she said amazingly that, I forgot the percentage, but something like 70 or 80% of the people that use the Greenway are walking. They're not biking. So just thought you'd be interested in that. And I think the next meeting will have someone from East West Gateway, and the one after that will have Rhonda, how do you pronounce her last name? The woman that runs the airport, she'll be discussing the strategic plan for the airport. So these meetings really are, they can be interesting. And also, you can meet a whole lot of people that are really from a whole other part of the county and just have a whole other perspective on things, and it's really broadening. So I would encourage you sometime, when you have time, to sign up and go with me. That'd be great. And I'd like to have somebody to carpool with, you know. Okay, and then I wanted to bring something up to you guys. Usually, we report on what we're doing, but if you want, sometimes we can bring something up just as a matter of efficiency, since we're all together. I was talking to our city manager, David, about this just this morning. I continue to kind of worry about protecting some of our last little buildings that are sort of old-timey Clayton, and the Williamsburg Shops area is one of the main ones that is worrisome. I'm not saying that, I suspect that it's going to be developed, you know, anytime soon, but I'd like to see if you'd be willing to have our staff look into different ways that we might overlay some protections there. And maybe it will be too cumbersome or too unpopular, and of course, we would want to involve the property owners with this discussion. But I'd like to ask David and his folks to kind of take a look at what the options might be. And it would definitely involve going down the road of something akin to a historic district, and I know that's cumbersome, but when I think about what that area, how valuable it is in terms of providing ambiance, culture, I mean, just sort of a, you know, sort of a charm and character is the word I'm looking for for us. And it's really one of our most successful, if it isn't our most successful retail area, I don't know what else is. So I think it's worth taking a look at if you guys, but if you guys think that's sort of a waste of time, please say so, or nod yes, and we'll take a look.
I think it makes sense.
Okay, okay, good. All right. No, don't have to do it tomorrow.
That's fine. It won't happen tomorrow, but we will start to do some research and put something together for a Friday session, and we'll talk through it a little bit. Talk about what these districts look like in different places, historic preservation districts, and the landmarks boards that are typically created to support them, so. Great, we'll get that scheduled.
Very good. And if there's nothing else, David, anything else?
Nothing else tonight.
Okay, if there's nothing else, we will need to go into closed session, so we'll need to read our paragraph.
I move that the Board adjourn to a closed meeting with a closed vote and record as authorized by Section 610.021, Subsections 1, 2, and 3 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri relating to legal issues, real estate and/or personnel, and to discuss matters relating to negotiation of a contract pursuant to Section 610.021, Subsection 12, Revised Statute of Missouri, and/or proprietary information pursuant to Section 610.01, Subsection 15, and/or information relating to public safety and security measures pursuant to Section 610.021, Subsections 18 and 19, Revised Statutes of Missouri.
Very good. Who's my seconder on this?
Second. Alderman Lins. Alderman Berkowitz.
Aye.
Alderwoman McAndrew.
Aye.
Alderwoman Ambuse.
Aye.
Alderwoman Patel.
Aye.
Alderman Fader.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we are adjourned and going into closed.